Thank you. Sorry about that, little confusion over the microphone. Welcome to our April 18th meeting. And please note the council's in full attendance. First item on our agenda is items from council. And I have a couple or handful of items that just want to knock those out, council, if y'all don't mind, and then whatever's left. I do want to share, if y'all don't mind, I'll start. I was invited to the Victoria Fire Corps. They had a little presentation, award presentation to some of their members. And I know the fire chief was there and had some very nice words. And so they're a wonderful organization of volunteers that support the fire department. And Tanner could say a lot more about that. But I told them that I would share. You want to pass that down? It's a nice plaque they presented. But that was last Thursday, I believe. And they did share some information I thought was really interesting. And I really appreciate them. And I told them that I think all of council appreciates them. In the 10 years since they've been organized in Victoria, the Fire Corps members have donated a total of 21,382 hours of service. And the approximate value is a little over half a million dollars. So really wonderful service, and we appreciate them a lot. I know you guys have seen them at times, at events and things. We do on our webpage, the fire department webpage, there is a link that, more information about the Fire Corps and how to join them if possible. And they also take donations because they exist off donations, I believe. They have a sponsor. They also have that refurbished ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
What color? I forget.
Blue.
The blue one.
It's blue.
And they use that to go on scene and then support the fire department and things. So we are very appreciative of them. I just want to share that with everyone. Okay. I'd ask for a couple of updates on things. I wanted an update on Eagle Creek subdivision. We recently, I believe, chip sealed, did maintenance on those couple of streets and had some questions from residents. I just wanted to get an update on where we were and et cetera.
Sure, sure. That project ended in September of 2016. And one of the last items was to do two sweepings. One was done immediately after. And then the other one, the final one, was done in, I think, January.
God bless you. And Jan, you were there when we, after the chamber lunch, and we were...
Yes. One of the residents asked if they were done with the streets. And I explained that, yes, that was maintenance. And so it was a chip seal, which personally I like to call goop and gravel because I think it explains it well. But there was a question about sweeping because apparently, you know, as the gravel wears in, some of it pops back out.
Yeah, it'll shell off for a little while.
We can relook and see if it needs another sweeping.
Right.
If they think the gravel is, you know, accumulated.
She was complaining about dust. Said that people were wearing masks because there was so much dust from it.
Okay.
And I think to some extent, that's just the shock of going from the hot mix to then the maintenance, which is a little bit rough road until it wears in.
Sure, we can have city forces go out there and do a sweeping. That's no problem at all.
Thank you, I'd appreciate it.
But, yeah, at least take a look at it. I know this has been a reoccurring topic. And actually, this is a good time just to, you know, for the public to hear that that is maintenance. It's not a street rebuild. It's meant to seal the street. And you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct.
The water damage that seeps into the base is what causes the long-term problems. So by sealing it, we try to prevent that water from seeping through. And then, of course, it's rough for a while until it wears in. The park is the best example. I think I brought that up to her. When we first chip sealed the park roads, of course, they don't have curb and gutter for the material to collect in. So it really wears in very nicely over time. And you don't, the excess aggregate that collects at the edges really isn't a problem. It might be a problem for Colby and his lawnmowers. But in the residential streets where the curb and gutter is, it collects, it's visible. It does look bad. Now, I go out and sweep. I mean, I've, you know, it's not a problem. But if they use a lot of aggregate, a lot will collect. It'll continue to shale off for a year or more. But, so, yeah, if staff, you know, and it just costs more the more we sweep. And it's, there's a point there. But it might have accumulated in some intersections, as you said earlier, Donald.
We have seen that. Sometimes it will accumulate in intersections again. And we'll go out and we'll sweep it.
Yeah.
We can take a look at it. There's no problem at all.
Some of the neighborhoods we did like a year and a half, two years ago, have now worn in actually fairly nice. But, you know, it's a maintenance procedure, so.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that, that it's maintenance. And I asked the question at one point, you know, why can't we come back with something smoother? And the reality is that the higher we build that road up, the faster we build it up, the sooner we have to rebuild it, which means it costs more money. And so what we're trying to do is maintain it as low as we can so that the street can continue to collect water and serve as part of our drainage.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have had one other item I want to bring up, some questions about the sports complex, Little League. And I know Colby, I had to ask him to come forward and kind of give us an update. There's some problems maybe with scoreboard and whatnot.
All right. I've got you a picture of Mayor Council. Thank you very much. Just wanted to give a brief update. We've had some concerns about some scoreboard issues that we are aware of and give you a timeline on what our estimated repair is going to be. And I was, I want to walk you back, you know, and when we first started noticing a couple of them out was in the summer of 2016, towards the end of Little League season. We had one on field three and one on field 10 that were both causing some problems. And so we called the manufacturer down. And field threes had a wire that got cut. We fixed that real quick. Field 10, we were able to repair enough that it was able to be used. And then we were done with Little League season. Now during our tournament ball with the girls' fast pitch tournaments and things that the parks department brings in, we don't even turn the scoreboards on for that. They're just used by the home team taking the score. And that's the official score for them. And so our normal practice is around February or March prior to Little League season, we'll go on and we'll test all the scoreboards. We do the same thing at Riverside Stadium before the generals start their season. They're normally the first ones. And so when we turned on, we were still in the same boat. We were okay. We started noticing that we were getting some outages. And it started, I think now we're up to about five or six of the fields that are having outages. And this is one of our scoreboards on our fields. And this next picture is kind of what you see is the outages. And on some of the score panels, each one of those, there's seven different LED strips that are there. And some of them, you can tell the lettering, some of them, there's enough of them out that if you try to put a four up or anything of that nature, it may look like a one or different things to that nature. And so when we started seeing that, we looked at, okay, we brought the manufacturer back down. What's going on? What can we do to remedy this? And what would be the cost of that? And so what we've got here is this is inside the board. And looking at the LEDs going in there, you have some corrosion that is happening to those LEDs where they connect to the motherboard. And that is something that we can't, that the reason that we've had these go out, they're not all at once. We'll have one little strip go out, and then two weeks later, another one might go out. And so what's causing that is they're rusting out. And once that loses that connection, you no longer get the LED light on. We called the manufacturer about this problem. He's come down and taken a look at what's going on. We budgeted for this in the upcoming budget. So when we present the budget in June to you, you'll see this back again. And that will be to repair the, all the scoreboards. Now, the difference is the two, because what I wanted to make sure of is that we didn't go in and do the same thing. And this happened to us in years, you know, four or five or three of the new panels being replaced in. These current scoreboards are 10 years old. So they were, they were put in 2007. The technology has tremendously changed. The LED now are encased in a rubber coating that will resist that corroding. That doesn't mean that it won't, that for five years, we won't have any problems with a scoreboard. But that's, we're able to get another five-year warranty out of those scoreboards. So that, to me, that's a better, than going out and buying a $5,000, $6,000 scoreboard for each field. And so that, we'll come back and fix it. The reason that we weren't, we're not able to do it now is it's, you know, it's north of $10,000 roughly to fix. And that's just something that we didn't have in the operating budget. And so that kind of gives an update. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have or...
Colby, those $10,000, would that take care of all of our fields? Or just the ones that we're having problems with right now?
That would fix them to get, to fix what we currently have out. What I'm getting now is a quote from Nevco to come in and see, okay, what can we do to make sure that we, you replace each panel. And so when you look back on this, the, under the home, there's what'd be two panels for eight and eight. And so right now, say that the right eight is out, that would, the $10,000 will fix that and replace the entire board. And so what I'm coming back with is how do I get to where I don't have one that's not rubber coated and the other? And so we're looking at that price. I don't think, from what the manufacturer says, he hadn't been able to, it's only going to be a few thousand dollars more to replace all of them. And so that's the route that we will go in next year's budget, once I get that completed dollar figure.
Okay. How many, how much more do you have left in the season? Or you said not everybody uses these, just Little League or...
For the most part, Little League's using them. They're the only ones now. We may have a private rental that comes in. Normally, all the tournament ball I've been at, I know Donaldson plays as well, and normally they're not turned on. Little League does use them. And they're a nice luxury for the fans to be able to be able to see and do. But I do want to stress that that's, that it's not hampering them being able to play the game. By all means, it's something that the fans like to see. We have spoke to Little League, or two of the Little League presidents, they called and voiced a concern with me. And so we worked through, okay, what can happen? When I explained the same scenario, that, you know, it's a budget issue and we will be budgeting for it. The Parks and Rec Department went out and we purchased some temporary flip scoreboards that the scorer, at the scorers table, they could, they could flip over. So at least the parents may not be able to see it from the exact seat, but they could, they could walk around, around first base and see, here's what the score is. And so we were able to do that. And most of the, the two presidents were like, okay, I think I can explain that to the parents where they're acceptable of it. Not that they, you know, they love it, but they can accept that solution for the time being until we're able to get the funds.
I see. So, okay.
While he's up there, I have a question, but not related to Little League. So just don't let him go.
So we have about four or five months till your new budget year rolls over and...
Yes, sir. And I think that there's, you know, we've had some question of, okay, if we came and brought the donated, you know, donated the money to the city to come. And after speaking to the manufacturer, we have about 30 to 40 days worth of Little League that is, you know, when we're complete. He's not sure that we have enough to complete this and get it to us within that four to six, six weeks period. And so in that case, I want to make sure that, you know, there's no reason to go out and spend that money right now if we can't get the parts until the Little League season's over anyway.
But if somebody wishes to donate money...
Oh, we'll be glad to take it.
For signs, we'll be glad to take that donation and put it in trust and agency and pay for those signs when we get to replacing them.
Sure.
Okay. That whole facility is 10 years now?
10 years.
10 years old.
I remember going to the meetings, helping support it.
Yeah, and we have some, you know, we had a, one of the larger shade canopies that ripped.
Yeah.
And that's what you're going to have. That cloth is 10 years old, and a stronger storm came in. And we're putting that in the budget to be replaced next year as well.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't have scoreboards when I played Little League. It's interesting how things have changed and expectations change. And I know we want it to work. I know everybody just wants it to get fixed. But sometimes, you know, we need to slow it down, do it right. I appreciate your comments about wanting all those boards to be, to have the rubber coating. It's kind of silly to do just part of it or the ones that are failing. So do it right. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Counsel, do y'all have questions for Colby?
I was asked about the tennis courts in the city. And part of my discussion was, okay, are you talking about the city's tennis courts? Are you talking about some of the other tennis courts? But apparently, there are some that the city has maintained, and they're not in great shape. And so I apologize for not asking you outside of council. But it just, when I saw you, it reminded me to ask if maybe you could look at some of the city courts or let me know which ones we maintain and what their condition is.
That's perfectly fine. I can, would you like me to do that now or just talk?
If you know it and are willing to, yes. And if not...
Okay. We have tennis courts at Athleti Tracy, of course. And then we have them at the youth complex or community center park. And so I believe there is six to eight full tennis courts, I think it's eight, that we have. And we know that, we know that the tennis courts at Athleti Tracy are holding up fine. The ones at the community center area, we need to be resurfaced. You know, we've talked about that in budget a couple of times, but it just wasn't able to get into the budgeting process to be done as far as getting the money to be able to resurface those at this time. And so that's, they need to be resurfaced, and they cost about $18,000 per court.
We used to have an association. Do we still? There was a tennis group.
There's a tennis association. I think they're still there. They play.
They normally play on Fridays at our, and they play at Athleti Tracy on Mondays, I believe. But Fridays is when they're over on that side.
Again, we'll take donations for that.
Saying I will.
Take donations for that.
Well, Colby, stay there for a minute because we do have one little surprise for you. Randy Vivian is here from the chamber. He has something for you. So you're not in trouble.
Well, I just wanted to take a minute and, you know, I looked up at the, at the city seal. And one of the things that we have now is on the city of Victoria, it says enhancing livability. And one of the things that I have to do on a regular basis when I visit with folks who are coming to Victoria and talking about moving here, moving their business here, is to talk about our livability and our ability to entertain, our ability to have parks, have these things that folks want. And in our business now, it's not about where you live. It's about quality of place. And part of quality of places is great parks and great arts and just everything that goes along with that. And one thing that the chamber board has looked at, and Brett Baldwin, who, where are you Brett? Brett's right behind me. We began talking about what is going on in the city that we really appreciate and really like. And the parks came up. And the, the quality of the parks, the condition of the parks over the last several years has improved dramatically. And we really feel that it's part of your leadership and part of the city's vision. And we appreciate that. With that, the chamber board has put a resolution together. And I'll hold it up for the camera here in a minute, but I'd like to read it. If I can find my glasses because it's in small print. I have 50-year-old eyes. Thank you. I got it. It's Victoria Chamber of Commerce. Be it resolved that the Victoria Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, a business-focused and business membership organization existing for the purposes to lead, empower, and unite our business community for the purpose of assisting business growth and economic development for that within the city of Victoria and existing under the laws of the state of Texas and having its address at 7403 Lone Tree Road, Suite 211, Victoria, Texas, unanimously resolves the following. Whereas the Victoria Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors are not only concerned about the business environment as a whole, but for the betterment of Victoria's economic development, but they are as equally concerned about the quality of life for the city of Victoria's citizens. And whereas the Victoria Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors understands the relationship between the value of Victoria's parks to the afford said quality of life necessity for the city of Victoria's citizens, as well as to the value they bring to both current employers and future locating employers and companies to the Victoria area, be it resolved that the Victoria Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors sincerely appreciates the hard work of the City of Victoria Parks and Recreation Department under the leadership of Director Colby Van Gundy and would thus like to recognize the outstanding landscaping and overall maintenance of the Victoria parks, their attractiveness, and having been viewed and experienced as an asset and a great quality of life, a value for the citizens of Victoria and the residents of the surrounding area. And it is signed by myself and the Board of Directors. And I will show that up. We can do that. Colby, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Randy. We really appreciate that. And we appreciate what the chamber does for Victoria, all your hard work. And I know Colby appreciates that. I have complimented him on the visible change in the parks as well. So I know that's a good reaffirmation of what we've been telling him. Uh-oh, you're getting back up.
Yeah, let me just say this. I didn't introduce the people behind me, but our board chair, Tom Curtis, was here. Brett Baldwin was also behind me in attendance. And Jeff Craig, police chief, is also on our Board of Directors. But we just appreciate the job that you guys do. I remember not too long ago, and things have dramatically improved in the city of Victoria. And I'm proud to be the chamber director, but I'm proud to work for the city too. So thank you, guys, and thank you for all you do. Colby, do a great job. Thank you, brother.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, I'm checking to see if I have anything else under items from council because we're still there. Counsel, do y'all have any, did we want to pull a few things, Jan?
I'd like to pull D2 and D9.
Okay. I did remember from this morning. You told me this morning that, oh, gosh, I got to make sure we... Okay. Counsel, do y'all have anything?
I pulled D10.
D10? Okay. If there's nothing else under items from council, we'll move into citizens communication. Anyone would like to come up and speak about anything at all? And as a courtesy to everyone, of course, we need your name and address. And then try to keep your remarks to five minutes or less as a courtesy. So we appreciate it.
Chip Dentz, 302 North Hummel, Victoria. Thank you, Mayor, Council. A couple of things. First off, I'd like to applaud our building code department. I know you're going to have some report from them subsequently. But especially Rick Madrid and his willingness to communicate with the building community on the administration of the codes, any changes, any amendments. He's been very forthcoming in including the building community, which we are the ultimate consumer of the code, if you will. Our home buyers and our newcomers to Victoria are the ultimate beneficiaries. But we, the builders, oftentimes represent them. So I would applaud, I would applaud them. And I'd like to bring to your attention, I heard the report earlier about some of the signs that were eight or 10 or 12 years old that were failing. There's a statute that I think is failing as it relates to, as it relates to our air quality attainment in Victoria. And the reason it comes to my attention is that it affects the building code significantly and especially the energy code. We have been in compliance for many years, from what I understand. But since 2001, we have been listed in the statute as being one of the affected counties. It's too late for this session, but going forward, I think that we should address how well we have maintained our air quality and see if there wouldn't be some provision to update that status because it really does affect how we administer our, especially our energy code. With that, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Citizens' communication still open? I see a familiar face.
Morning, Counsel. Our afternoon. I come with y'all with maybe some suggestions for our Little League park. I know we're in dire need for assistance and field money and stuff like that. But when we first put the Little League fields, we had sponsorship boards that went across our scoreboards. I talked to some of the presidents. They're saying that they're no longer maybe doing them now. And I think the sponsorship at the time was maybe like $5,000, and you have your name on the boards. And I went yesterday, and there's quite a few of them that doesn't have. And there's some that do. I didn't know if we still had it in place or we don't. No one really, I asked some of the presidents, and some said they did, and some said they didn't. And I was just, you know, that's something that we could use as a Little League for our program. Another thing that I was, I was listening to Colby about the fields, the signs being thing, being down, is that when we built these fields 10 years ago, we were saying, okay, we're going to have big tournaments, we're going to bring people to our town, heads in beds. That was our biggest thing. But according to one of the city council members, that we don't get that. I was thinking, maybe we can get some funds from heads in beds, tax money, to maybe flip the bill for some of these signs. There again, they said it can't be done because apparently we can't use that money, even though we bring people to the town. So there may be, if I can get maybe an answer and see if that's true, you know, it's up and down. But I wanted to let y'all know on some of the, I did talk to some of the presidents. I got what, three of them of the Little League. And we have 680 players on Little League. That's just three zones. At $20 a person that they charge each kid to use the fields. So that's just the Little League. I didn't get the other zone. He was working. And Victoria Girls Youth Association, we have 432 girls that pay $20 to play the fields, rent the fields. And to me, that's, I was, you know, 1,122 kids that play on our fields. You know, at one time, at some point, we have to say, you know, these kids are using them. And that was the whole point of us building these fields, is that kids can be, have a place to play, have a place to be. And, you know, it's, like I said, wear and tear is coming along, which is true. Wear and tear does come with the process, you know. But at the same time, we have to budget that and say, hey, it's coming. You know, it's like everything else, it's going to come. I was just, you know, if, when it does come, and ask for, when it does need to be, the money needs to be allocated towards it, you know, if y'all would reconsider and say, hey, let's put this in there so we can help the kids and keep them going and keep them playing out there. So thank you for your time.
And I'll get answers back for Mr. Trevino on a couple of questions he had. I'll work on getting you some answers back on those questions.
Thanks for coming down, taking the time to share your opinion. I think he doesn't mind if I could just call him Nacho. All right. Items from council, excuse me, citizens' communication still open? If anyone else has anything? Seeing no one get up, we'll close citizens' communication. We have no ordinances. Why don't we handle the consent agenda items that are not pulled? Get those out of the way.
Sure. There are nine items remaining on the consent agenda that'll be approved by a single vote tonight. Excuse me. They are D1, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April 4th, 2017. D3, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Third Amendment to the fleet management and maintenance agreement with First Vehicle Services to allow modified fees for fleet management and maintenance services for a target cost of $1,176,665,000 and declaring an effective date. D4 is a resolution approving the purchase of 18 replacement sets of Morning Pride firefighting structural protective clothing from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated in the amount of $45,802.26, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. D5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual supply contract with Boundary Medical LLC for the purchase of emergency medical supplies in an estimated amount of $130,000 and declaring an effective date. D6 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Texas Health Center, PA, for an annual first responder physical health surveillance program in the estimated amount of $30,000 and declaring an effective date. D7 is a resolution approving the sale of tax-for-closed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 1,005 North De Leon to Mark Ramirez in exchange for $5,000 and declaring an effective date. D8 is a resolution approving the sale of tax-for-closed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 3404 Cypress to Raquel Rodriguez in exchange for $6,000 and declaring an effective date. D11 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 275-kilowatt diesel generator with a transfer switch from Lofton Equipment Company in the amount of $62,521 via a government cooperative contract, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. And D12 is a resolution awarding the Ben Jordan Concrete Outfall Repair to MGP Concrete Company for their low quote of $38,180, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the repairs and declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
Okay, so we have a second, excuse me, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, all the consent items passed. We'll just go back to D2 now?
D2 is a resolution awarding contracts for 2016/17 HVAC replacement project D two is a resolution awarding contracts for 2016-17 HVAC Replacement Project to Victoria Air Conditioning Incorporated for units at the Victoria Public Library in the amount of $18,550, and to Schrader Refrigeration for units at the Community Center and the Pump Station in the amount of $52,074, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, discussion.
The reason I asked to pull this, I wanted a little more information on, I noticed that there were bids both for regular units and for high efficiency units. We've chosen the regular units, and I wanted to hear a little bit about why that was done over the high efficiency units. I know that there's a cost difference, so I didn't know if it was just what was in the budget, if it was not worth it, the savings of the electricity over the period of time.
I remember there was the cost difference, however, we do look at the savings that we do get from the energy, the high efficiency units. In the case of, for instance, the Community Center, those units do not run 24/7 or periodically every day, so they're, we're turning them off, leaving them off during the times we're not utilizing them, so the efficiency that you're getting from the high efficiency units are not gonna be realized, the savings from there. One of the ones, the other ones, when we did the calculations on the one at Tipoletti, that showed still a, about a 13-year payback for the cost difference between those efficiency ratings, and then the Public Library also had about a 13-year payback.
And these units that we're replacing are about 15 years, which...
We have standardized that 15 years on our replacements.
Okay, so that, I understand what you're saying then, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes. D nine?
D nine is a resolution approving the sale of tax for closed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 101 Guinevere to Platinum Home Investments LLC in exchange for $100 and declaring an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, the reason I asked this one to be pulled, it just kind of screamed. It's property that, according to the tax value, is $11,000, there was a bid of $100. We just, in the consent agenda, approved a couple of other sales, but those tax value, the amount that was due or the value was much more comparable to, the amount of the bid and the value of the property was much more comparable. And so I really felt like I wanted to understand more the procedure of where these bids come from and how aggressively we seek these bids, or if we just wait for somebody to come forward and make an offer.
And Ms. Scott, the tax foreclosure process is handled by an outside law firm for both the city and the county, Leinberger, Goggins, Simpson, and Blair. I hope I got all those names right, Stephen will correct me if I didn't. Stephen Sausedo from that firm is here tonight to help answer those questions, and so Stephen, if you want to come forward, Ms. Scott can ask her questions directly to you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, city council members, and thank you, city staff, for having me here tonight. My name is Stephen Sausedo, I'm an attorney with the Leinberger Attorneys at Law, we just recently are marketing ourselves under that, it's a lot easier to remember.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Scott, if I give a little background on how this works, we try to, according to the delinquent property tax code, taxes become delinquent and turned over to our firm July the first of every year, at which time, if those taxes are not paid, ultimately results in us having to file a lawsuit and foreclose on the property. At the end of that lawsuit process, those tax sales are held once a month, the first Tuesday of every month. In this particular case, this property first went to sale back in, I believe, June the 7th, 2016, so about 10 months ago. It was advertised, we advertised that in the paper per the Texas Property Tax Code for three consecutive weeks prior to the initial first sale. Additionally, we market the property as well locally, and we do it statewide on the internet. After that first tax sale, there were no bidders at the live auction, at which time the property is quote-unquote struck off, which means that the county takes ownership as trustee for every taxing authority in the underlying tax suit. So that was 10 months ago when it was struck off, and the, now property of all the taxing entities. Now, at that time, anybody can walk in and pay the minimum bid that was first at the tax sale. However, if there is an offer to purchase the property that is less than the minimum bid at the initial tax sale, that requires the authorization of every underlying taxing authority that was involved in the suit, that's how come it's in front of you tonight. Now, this particular piece of property already went up for a private, it was already set for our tax resale. We have tax resales about twice a year, we try to have it the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. So this one would have already been, one, at the public auction, there were no bidders, it was struck off, then two, it would have gone towards the end of the year at a private sale, there were, nobody bid on it then. Now, we're at the kind of the third step, where somebody probably, somebody just put in, rather, excuse me, a $100 bid. Now, that bid, we don't advertise that in the paper, but we do put, there is a list of all the available properties that are available for purchase at the tax office, and they can call my office as well, and we also market it by placing a for-sale sign in the property itself about a month prior to the tax resale, which is held at our law office here in town. At that time, there was one person who bid $100, and now that's what's before you tonight. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Wow, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
Since y'all have already accepted it, do we have to accept it?
Well, the county has accepted it, but if any taxing authority denies, decides it's not sufficient, or for whatever reason they want, they have the right to not accept it, which case we'll go back to square one.
And if this is approved, is its value now $100 on the tax rolls, or is it still the $11,000 that it's valued at?
It's still valued at $11,000. The delinquent tax process is separate from the appraisal process, I can tell you that this particular piece of property is 0.08 of an acre in a triangle, nothing can be built on it, I don't know why it's valued that high, but that would be appraisal district matter and not a delinquent tax collection matter, but for right now, that's the facts on the ground. The county has already approved the $100, but it would still require your approval in order to go through, and then I still have to take it after you approve to the school district to get their approval as well.
But it'll be taxed at some rate, there'll be some tax that gets paid on it, going forward.
Yes, if you look at your sheet, yes, going forward, it'll be taxed at whatever rate they have it at, if they don't protest it, to try to get a change. So currently, yes, it will be taxed at $11,000 rate, at the $11,000 value.
Value.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure this is one of those cases where they will disclose the purchase price, right? Y'all know how that works, of course, most people don't want to do that. Does your, while you're here, this was one of those unique ones that went to a third, because the original sale's on the courthouse steps still, or no?
That's correct. Property sold on the courthouse steps after the foreclosure process for the lesser of the value of the property or the amount the taxes do. So if the value of the property is $10,000, the taxes are $1,000, we start the bid at $1,000. If for some reason the taxes exceed the value of the property, which can happen if there's title issues and we can't foreclose in time, or some other variables, then that amount would be different.
Okay, I had to chuckle, history tends to repeat itself. The process that was described is addressed in this council chambers every few years, and I believe it was Mr. Halapaska last time that suggested putting for-sale signs in, do you remember?
Well, at that time, the problem was, many times there would come a piece of property up for sale, right next door to a gentleman who would love to have an extra lot, he didn't know about it until after the fact. So we suggested putting a for-sale sign on the lot, perhaps neighbors or next-door neighbors would like it, and might entice him to bid a little more than might a stranger.
I mean, I've actually been to the courthouse steps and bid on properties, it's been a number of years since I've done that, but this particular property's interesting. John Kaminsky, do you happen to know about, you said, you mentioned the size of it, does it achieve the minimum lot size for anything? 6,000 square foot is residential, do you know offhand? That's okay, I didn't ask.
I can't imagine it would meet a minimum lot size for any use.
I was just curious as why someone would get it maybe for...
I think it would need to be assembled with something else, with another adjacent lot, or perhaps sold to an adjacent property owner.
Which is fine, I mean, there may be plans we don't know about, or a sign.
That's another thing I was wondering, is if it's restricted.
Who knows? It's an interesting process, though, so the main thing is to get it back into use where someone pays the taxes on it, mows it, you know, we end up mowing these properties. To me, I've always thought that was an orphaned property, that's kind of a word that I think we use, it just sits there, so, anyway, sorry. Okay, any further questions on number nine? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Sausedo. D ten?
D ten is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Zambelli Fireworks to provide fireworks for the city's Fourth of July fireworks show in the amount of $30,000 and declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge Hartman Distributing and their $15,000 contribution, and thank them for their continued support of our Fourth of July celebration, that was it.
Thank you, I was hoping you were gonna do that. So, how many years is Hartman?
I don't know, as long as I've been around, it's quite some time now.
They do the majority of the work for that program, that's not a, our staff does help, but Hartman, those are, they're good guys, and they do a great job for that.
Well, they also help us with our street dances, and I mean, they're just huge community contributors. Boot Fest, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
That is all.
Thank you, Dr. Yan. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes, so we'll go into E one, resolutions.
Item E one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and Victoria County Drainage District Number Three for drainage ditch maintenance and declaring an effective date.
If I want to make a motion to table it, we can still discuss it, or we need to have a motion to approve it, and then a motion to table?
Interestingly, since we don't yet have a motion on the table, we have nothing on the floor to discuss. If council's desire is to take this up at a later date instead of tonight, all that we have to do is simply not have a motion, and it would, we would move on without addressing this issue.
What if we want to discuss it?
If you want to discuss it first, then it'd be appropriate to make a motion, get a second to approve, and then at some point in the future, if you'd like to make a motion to table prior to the vote, you can make a motion to table.
Okay, make a motion to approve item E one?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Is it just so I can talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Or anybody can, it's good that it's on the agenda so everybody can have a chance to look at it, and I know the newspaper and whoever else. And I have to thank Councilman Bocknight the last few weeks for helping with some of the input, a lot of the input on the four points in the agreement, and we just sent it to the Drainage District Commissioner, the one in particular that I communicated with late last week, I don't know what day that was, so they need a little more time to look at it, I think they may have a meeting later this week, and I offered to go to that and visit with them about it, or attempt to answer questions if I could, haven't heard back from them, so, you know, we'll table this maybe till our next meeting. I wouldn't like to, I do not want to delay it past the next meeting, but also, at this point, since it's on the floor for discussion, just to reiterate the four points that we're asking for, number one is reimbursement for a small portion of our mowing contract, which we contract out now, and that reimbursement is based upon the distance and mileage of the entire system that those guys have to maintain for one mowing a year, since their objective is only to mow to keep the water flowing, as opposed to some of what we do is for aesthetics. So we might mow part of those drainage areas three, four, five times, depending on rainfall, they would only be required to do it once, which is reasonable, and so last year, that would have amounted to, I believe, about $34,000, Steph ran a number for me. There's no number in that item one, because it might vary slightly, shouldn't vary a whole lot from that.
Is the expectation that they would be the ones that mow?
No.
Or that they, it would be a reimbursement?
It would be a reimbursement.
Okay, it does say reimburse, I'm sorry.
And then the second item, of course, the detention facility on Airline there by our splash pad, you know, we invested a little over $2 million to get that started. There is another phase of it that is not in the works at this time, but it could be within maybe, let's say, six, eight, 10 years. We are asking them to participate in that phase when the such time occurs, and, you know, we'll make sure, hopefully, we'll give them a very advanced notice at a maximum of $600,000 or 30%, which is higher, and, you know, I don't know the cost of that next phase, if it was $1 million, for example, 30% would only be $300,000, so we just are asking them to participate when the time comes. The third item is, of course, the maintenance for the one particular outfall a year, drainage reshaping there, and then, of course, the fourth item is only if there is an emergency, for example, if we have a hurricane, what tends to happen is tree limbs cover every street in Victoria, and it's hard to get around, and we're asking that, upon request, they'll come into town, help pick all those limbs up, they do have some of the equipment for that. So those are the four items that we will hope they will agree to, and I'm fine waiting another two weeks, if that's the case, so.
Only thing I want to stress on this, this was the mayor's and I, and working with Thomas, and trying to get our take of what are we, we were asking of them to do. Of course, they're reviewing it right now, and I'm not fully aware of all their statutes that the Drainage District falls under through the state and everything, and so I do expect changes to it, and, you know, we'll see what they come back with.
I'm gonna wait and see. I hope there's none, but we'll wait and see.
Make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Does he need a second?
Second.
Okay, and then we have to vote on that, so all in favor of the motion to table it to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign? Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bocknight, for getting that on the floor.
Item E two is a resolution approving the Sixth Amendment to the interlocal agreement for governmental services between the city of Victoria and Victoria County, authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Make a motion to adopt E two, so we can discuss it.
I'll second, for the same reason.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and second. I know the city manager, I think, wants to share or update us on a few things.
A few comments before y'all get into your discussions and try to answer any questions, just to kind of recap what's gone on since the end of March, when Judge Zeller presented his first offer of $24,000 plus some change for the contract, which I went back and stated that the current contract, if, you know, if the amendment is not amended, then the current contract goes back to 14.5% of the fire budget, and that was my proposal back to him. So we've had numerous conversations since then, and so the judge and the Commissioners' Court sent a final offer to us last week, which, and it's in the resolution, but just for the public's benefit, it's, for first three years, it's 6.85 million, for the next three years, it's 6.835 million, and that's a six-year term, or a two-year term at 1.67 million. So it's a six-year or a two-year term, and just so you understand, it has to be amended by May 1st, if it's not amended, then the contract rolls back to the 14.5% of the original contract from 2007. The county has the right to terminate that contract, and I spoke to Judge Zeller this morning just to verify, you know, what he felt like would happen, and of course, he's speaking for himself and not the Commissioners, but he felt like if one of the amendments weren't done, that they would terminate the contract, but then seek to immediately start renegotiating another contract with us, because they fully would like for us to do the fire service in the county. And there's been some comments about we do this every two years, and we do do this every two years. For years now, we have come up with a solution of how we're gonna be paid, and, you know, that old saying, that if neither party's happy, it must be a pretty good contract, because that seems to be what's happened through the years. The county comes back and doesn't like the way the contract's being calculated, we never feel like we get our full amount reimbursed, the cost of delivering the services to the county, so we're back at that point again, so there is some, you know, contention there between what the number needs to be and what it should be. I know at the two county commission meetings ago, one of the Commissioners suggested maybe getting a third-party in to look at the contract to come up with how we would be reimbursed, so that's also still out there, but if one of these amendments is taken up, the six-year would not, the two-year, though, we'd have to go back in to determine how we're gonna be reimbursed for the fire service. You know, thinking about this, you know, the judge says it's a fair value, and I think what we have to say is, well, the county has decided what value they're placing on our service that we provide. And that's the 1.685 for those three years and then the two, 1.835 for the following three years. That's the value they've established. I want to make real sure everybody understands, the judge has been very clear when he talks to me, this has nothing to do with the quality of services they receive from our fire department. They think they receive an outstanding service and those gentlemen and ladies do a fabulous job. And I think it's very important that the public understands that. And our fire department understands that because when we start talking about whether we're going to amend or terminate, they're sitting out there wondering what's going on. It has nothing to do with the quality of service and I want to make sure we understand that. I've heard a couple of questions and one that I want to try to clarify, and it goes back to the call volumes. The reports that we've given you over the last few years and the annual report that Tanner does shows that the call volume is 2,050 calls, that is an incident, per incident. We do not calculate how many vehicles we're sending to that incident. If an incident calls for us to send three vehicles, that's only one call. So I've heard, you know, people say, well, you're counting all the vehicles you send. We do not. It's based on that incident. So depending on what the incident is, whether we send a pumper, whether we send a pumper and ambulance, whether we send a pumper and a brush truck, it just depends on what the call is. So that, for that clarification, so the public understands how those calls are done. I like to say it's like an insurance policy. We stand ready to serve and to respond to calls in the county, just like we do in the city. They get the same level of service that our citizens within the city limits receive. There's a cost to that insurance and that's called our, you know, stand by that ready cost, you know, just like you pay for your car. You hope you never use it, but you're going to pay a fee and when you use it, it's there. So, and that's part of when we start talking about cost, you have to look at what that overhead is to stand ready to serve. So those are my brief comments and be glad to answer any questions, but see what council wishes to do.
Well, I got a couple of comments. First, that first offer that was made of $24,000. The judge had presented that to be based on appraisal value increase in the county versus appraisal value increase in the city. Now, I think that's a real red herring. If you look at that increase, I don't think it was a very genuine offer because if the contract was based on appraisal values to begin with and we tied it all back to appraisal values, they're going to end up paying 38% of the budget. And then we can talk about increases based on appraisals as they come in each year and what the property taxes are. So I don't think that that was really a genuine offer or wasn't thought out as to what the basis of our contract is. Now, we have a 14.5% contract. And I have not heard from the county any reason why it shouldn't be 14.5%. It was at 12 for the last years, last few years, but without an amendment, it stays at the original agreed-to 2007 rate of 14.5%. They have made no argument why it's not to be 14.5%. They just threw a number out there that has no basis. On the other hand, we don't have a basis that can say why it's 14.5%. There's a long history behind why it was and it's an evening up of services and other things. So I can't say that 14.5 is exactly right and they can't say that it needs to be lower than 14.5. And also, I don't like the six-year term. That gives us, it's too long of a term for me and I don't want to cancel the contract either come May 1st. I don't want to, you know, I want to try and some olive branch because, remember, judge was notified in December that, reminded that by May 1st, we're going to have to do something. He was told, and that's, fire contract's coming up May 1st. That's five months that we had to negotiate something out and we didn't get there. I don't have any, a lot of confidence that we're going to get there by October 1st if he cancels the contract and wants to negotiate again. I'd like to make a different proposal to go forward. Instead of the six years, I'd like to stick with the two years. I'd like the first year, and I'll make this in a formal amendment, but I'd like to at least try and bring it out there. He had proposed for the first three years to be 1.685 million. I'd like to propose, I'm going to propose that for the first year of the contract. And then his second value, I'll use for the second year of the contract, 1.835 million. And that's still not the 14.5%. It's not the 12%. And during the next two years, which I think is a reasonable amount of time, we would hire an outside consultant, as they suggested. And let's get something that is, that we can actually base our numbers on each time instead of arguing about what percentage it should or shouldn't be. But let's put it on some real data. And that's kind of where I stand on it right now.
I have questions as well. Some have to do with, is the county, you know, negotiating in good faith on this and to respect it? Are they truly wanting to sit down and determine what expenses go on which side of this balance sheet? And if that's true, they truly wish to do so, then perhaps that would be one answer to say, yes, this is and no, this is not. I still believe those numbers would come out in the city's favor. I have had people come to me and say, we pay city tax, we also pay county tax. Then the county comes back, says, we don't want to pay the share of that that we're using. And so the city dwellers are saying, well, isn't, aren't we subsidizing the county? And many people feel like they are. They're paying twice, they're paying the county taxes that we all pay, but a portion of their city tax are going to pay for what the county chooses not to. We're just all looking for equity and looking for a way out of this. And those are some questions, not necessarily answers, but I will have to agree with Councilman Bocknight. Six years, inflation-wise is a long time. And you just, nobody's crystal ball lasts that long, that you can see in the future what kind of increases we're going to have in any operating. If we've been giving pay raises, you'd expect some creep there, which we hope to be able to accomplish. I think a new fire truck will always cost more than an old fire truck. That's a given. And so on we go. So none of these things are rocket science. I just don't want to be trapped into a six-year, especially if inflation really gets rampant. I know y'all hate my history lessons, but there was one on Lone Tree where we delayed a year because of trying to access these small slivers of property. And that one year, we lost almost $2 million because the bids went up. It's very high inflation in steel and concrete in those years.
I would like to respond. My, all my conversations with Judge Zeller, I firmly believe they are very interested in sitting down and trying to come up with a number. And I think that's why they're proposing maybe a third party to look at it. So, no reason to not believe that.
Okay.
So Jeff, are you suggesting we go with option two and changing the figures to the 1.685 and then the second year of 2019 to 1.835?
Yes, I can make that amendment if y'all.
I can help you with the drafting of that motion to amend because there is an exhibit attached to this resolution and the exhibit is the contract. If everyone would like to turn to that. That Sixth Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement has two paragraphs, at the bottom of the first page and the top of the second page, which define the county's reimbursement. And it already includes those dollar figures, 1.685 and 1.835, that Councilman Bocknight is suggesting. And so with his amendment, and if you'll allow me to phrase it for you, we could strike the dates 2018 through 2020 in paragraph two and change that to simply 2018. That would be both in the title or caption of that paragraph as well as in the third line of that paragraph. And then in paragraph three, we could likewise change the date to 2019, likewise in the caption of the paragraph and in the third line of the paragraph. And the effect of that would be that for the year 2018, the county would reimburse the city $1.685 million. And then for 2019, the county would reimburse the city $1.835 million. Councilman Bocknight, does that effectively capture what you're?
Yes, I think you did scratch out each.
Also need to scratch out the word each. Thank you.
And the other thing that he wanted was the third party? So would we add it to this?
I don't think it needs to be in this interlocal agreement, but I think it's something that we do need to move forward with. But yes, that wording, as you described and adding each, scratched out on each of those, I make a motion to amend as presented by Thomas. Mr. Gush, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend. And then, of course, I'd like to have some discussion too, but does anyone else want to go first? If not, just, I like to repeat facts very clearly because sometimes things get a little bit twisted around. We have a contract and we're happy with the 14.5%. So we have an existing contract, make that very clear. It's the county that wishes to amend it and that's perfectly okay. And of course, they were told in December last year, this particular contract, as the city manager pointed out, expires May 1st. So it's a bit late. I guess it doesn't matter, just it caused for a little concern, but it doesn't matter. We're here and we're working on it. But, you know, we have in a contract, the city is not holding that contract up. Make that very clear. We never have been. It auto-renews. So, and I like what Councilman Bocknight has expressed. And I've been dealing with this quite a bit, probably more than what the city manager would even like me to.
Absolutely.
You sure about that?
Absolutely.
But that's okay. I know how well we work together, so, because I did visit Commissioners' Court and express to them that, you know, we both bodies, it's not about scoring points for city or county and both of us, both bodies, just need to represent the constituents that we have as efficiently as best as possible. That's all this is about. Some of the comments at Commissioners' Court were a little disappointing, but that's okay. I don't want to rehash any of that. It doesn't really matter. We just need to continue this wonderful service to those citizens in the county and be fairly, fairly compensated. You know, and I went to the trouble, and I'm not going to share details tonight, but, you know, I did my own analysis and it's like, and the city manager did, I'm going to repeat some of what she said. It would be great if no one ever dialed 911 again because they didn't need any, need us for anything. We'd still have a department. We still have the majority of the costs there. So in my mind, there needs to be, it's kind of like your insurance policy. You pay it every year, but you hope you never use it, right? But we still have a fixed portion that we have to pay for and then a variable portion, which is based on calls. And I have run numbers, you know, to where we base a little bit on population, a little bit on total property values and then some on calls. And some of the things I've heard from some of the members of the Commissioners' Court about, well, you shouldn't count this, you shouldn't count that. Every way I remove those numbers, the reimbursement still comes back to me higher. I'm sorry, it just does. So I'm happy to have a third party look at this. Maybe I'm wrong, you know, maybe, I, who was it, Mr. Halapaska, you said in our favor? I don't really, and I don't mean to disagree with you. I don't think it's about being in our favor, it's just.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, yeah, it's pure equity. I mean, you know, I have said in a couple of places I've been for 16, 17, if you just took the calls and divided the budget by that, the counties, the resident in the county is $773 a call. For the city, it's $1,384 a call. But, you know, I understand full well, they have a volunteer, good group of voluntary departments out there that do respond and that, that must be taken into account. And I did take things like that into account in all my numbers. And every time I do, guess what? It still is, what their offer is, is less. So that's okay, that doesn't matter. Let's let someone else do that. It'll be interesting to see. And I think, and one of the Commissioners recommended and I agreed with them, I think it's a good idea. It may cause a little more work, maybe a little, you know, but let's do that. So let's see how it turns out. Just the bottom line is, we need to work together to make sure that this great service is continued for everybody in the city limits and in the county. Okay. So we have, is there any further discussion?
I have discussion, but not on the.
Okay.
Motion that's on.
Okay, this is, go ahead.
No, I think what she's saying is not on the amendment.
Right.
Okay, are y'all, are y'all ready to vote on the amendment? Okay, we have a motion and a second and everyone's clear on it. It's going to a two-year. Let me just repeat the way I heard it. So it'll be a two-year contract and year one will be $1,685,000 and then year two will be $1,835,000. And I will just say this, that year one would represent around a 13% maybe, maybe a little less. Year two, depending on the budget size, that would probably be maybe just same 13%, a little over. That's not a firm number because we don't have those numbers, so I just want to point that out. Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, ayes have it. Is still on the floor?
Just as a reminder, that is a counter to his offer, so it will go back to Commissioners' Court on Monday to see whether they will accept it or not. And I don't mean to interrupt you, but the, so Thomas, if they accept it, it's got, it's going to have to come back to council on May 4th?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
This resolution would authorize the city manager to sign the agreement that they're, that council is approving tonight.
Okay.
So, so long as the county agrees to the terms that we're presenting to them in this counter offer, you would be authorized to sign it before May 1st or at whatever time that they accept it.
Okay, thank you.
If they choose to again make a counter offer to this offer, it would have to come back to city council, which of course it cannot before the deadline of May 1st because our next meeting is May 2nd.
Unless we had a special meeting.
Unless we called a special meeting, that's right.
So we can if needed.
We can with 72 hours' notice.
My, my question, excuse me, since you had us look at the contract as we were reviewing it, paragraph number four, it says incorporation and termination of Fourth Amendment, but this is the Sixth Amendment.
Thank you for catching that. I figured you probably would. This afternoon when I was looking at it, I found that typo. And I'll also point out another mistake in the introductory paragraph where it says that this blank day of 2015. I've also corrected that. I've made both of those corrections to the document that will ultimately be sent to the county. But thank you for pointing them out.
He really did. He pointed that out before the meeting to me. He really found it.
Do we, do we have to formally?
No, those are Scrivener's errors or, you know, changes to form, not to substance. And so we can make those little corrections without there being a formal amendment on the floor.
Then I'm sorry, I brought it up.
We still need to vote on the E-2 is amended.
That's correct.
But is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? E-2 passes, so we have, that concludes the resolutions. We have a couple of city manager reports.
I, when we did the CIP discussion, Councilman Bocknight and Councilwoman Solis talked about Crestwood. And so we said we would bring back the alternatives, you know, Crestwood III versus I and starting on the end toward Ben Jordan first. So Donald has set a piece of paper out in front of you tonight that shows you those numbers and he stands up there ready to talk about it.
Right. Charmel said on March 21st, public work staff brought before you update to the 27 CIP. And part of that presentation was a project for the Crestwood rebuild project. As it currently is proposed, Crestwood would be built in three phases, starting kind of on the west side. That would be Maine to Novero in 2018. 2019 would be Novero to Laurent. And then 2020 would be Laurent to Ben Jordan. At that time, council asked if it would be possible to maybe swap Phase One and Phase Three. The short answer to that is yes, it's possible. However, in order to do that, we have to find about $775,000 because Phase Three is about $775,000 more expensive. Working with finance, thank you Gilbert, we think we've come up with a good solution to that. And that would be to, to move Vine Street, postpone Vine Street and push it from 2018 to 2020. And that would free up about $1.4 million, which is more than, much more than you need for the $775,000. We'll leave you about $610,000 in funds available in 2018. As Charmel said, I put a one-page handout in front of you and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Reese, what, do you have a dollar figure to fix Vine from Mockingbird to McRae?
Ken, did we come up with that? I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that number, but I can.
Just curious to see if it would fit in that.
That's a good, that's a good idea. We can, we can get that number for you.
You gotta keep one thing in mind, that you might have capacity within a year, but there's other years down the road that was counted on that money to be used. that was counting on that money to be used. So you might have in 2018 some capacity there, funding, but the only thing we did, we took a piece from the future, from two years, and switched it over. But everything else stills remain between that needs to be funded. So if you change more than, if you use $600,000 up, that's available right now in 2018, that means something else is going to give out further down the road.
Except that if we were using the same, same project and just splitting it into two pieces, then
You have to do some other type of maneuver, yes.
There might be some economies.
And I'm saying is that the only thing we did here, we moved a project from 2020 over into 2018, and then 2018 over to 2020.
What I heard him present was that the Crestwood portion from Navarro to Maine and the Vine Street project, if you looked at the combined value of those in 2018, you can't do all of Vine, so you would take the money and do the Ben Jordan to Laurent section of Crestwood, that didn't eat up that same amount of money, and you would have $600,000 left over, at which time, it's the same year, why couldn't you use it from McRight to Mockingbird?
In 2018, you had the money.
It's the same money that you had when you started.
Gilbert, that's what he's talking about, no, he's talking about just using, if we can do a portion of Vine with, with the $600,000, let's do that. But it just may mean that we don't get to the rest of Vine for several years down the road, but we can do that.
Okay, you told him a cut in half.
Yes, just a portion of it, yes.
Or not all the way to Red River.
Stand corrected.
Yeah, no, yeah. So what he's, and so what we just need to do is go back and see what portion of Vine we can do for the $600,000, and see what that dollar gets us.
But again, just, whatever that total, we still got some future projects, I got, we got to meet, so whatever the total price is, we, I got to plug that amount. If we're going to use, it's hard to show you all these, my numbers, but still, what we just did relieved, I think it was $600,000 in 2018. But that's, that's counted, that 600, that money was being used in the future to use another project.
But still the same project, it's just a smaller portion.
It was going to, it's other projects. It was a lump of money that we set aside, that once we slice and dice, it's hard to explain without visualizing and showing you what I'm talking about. But there's a pot of money that needs to be taken care of, I mean, project needs to be taken care of, and that $600,000 will be helped funded out in the future. Now, if you take the one you talked about and slice that and do that piece, yeah, that's fine, because we're not using the whole thing.
As long as we don't exceed the delta there, the $600,000 that's not allocated for 18, we're okay. It's just, don't, don't ask for any more money above that $600,000.
Yeah.
Right? You, you haven't.
If you take that 1.4 divided in half
Yeah.
and use the remaining for the future, you're fine.
Yeah.
Yes.
But if you're going to use that other half somewhere else, I can't, it's not going to work.
No.
That's why, my point.
Okay, no. Yeah, and judging by the cost of what Dairy Road was, unless it's short sections, unlikely that $600,000 is going to take care of that section of Vine.
Well, Dairy, we're doing some, those ditches.
No, the original.
Oh, the original, okay. It was in, it was in concrete too, though, I think.
Oh, was it?
I think we did, that Dairy Road close to the loop.
Just up to the bridge to the loop.
I think that's in concrete.
It was like 750,000.
No, Dairy Road's not concrete, it's asphalt, okay.
I just remember, I was shocked by the price.
Yeah, it's, but we can look and see, yeah.
Yeah, Red River down in the park, you know, 1.7?
Yeah.
Good lord.
We spend money in the millions. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Is there a consensus to do, to do that flip then, is that kind of what we're hearing, or?
Please. I like it.
Okay, okay.
Please. I like it, and I think it's a good idea. Well, you can't bid these together, they're not contiguous road sections. The same bid, yeah, you can't do that. You don't want to bid that section of Crestwood and then try to get some economies to scale the bid, throwing in the Vine Street part. That's for y'all to talk about, you know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Because they're not contiguous, but if somebody's going to bring the equipment in, they might be able to do them both together.
We can, we can look into it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
So, um, the last event for the night.
The best?
The, the last. I guess Jeff might think it's the best, because he's going to enjoy it.
Sure he will, sure he will. Thank you. Before I start, I want to recognize Rick Madrid, our building official, sitting behind me, who's been educating me on this topic. He's here to back me up if there are questions that are beyond my limited understanding of these codes. Want to also recognize Mr. Dent, who was here earlier and spoke. He's a very knowledgeable resource and an excellent representative of his association, and we appreciate the way that he works with us on these codes and code adoptions. And Mr. Raleigh McCoy, who's in the room tonight also, is a chair of our Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and is certainly directly involved in this. I, I want to make it clear that I'm far from the subject matter expert on this topic. There are several people in this room, two of whom, three of whom I've already mentioned, and one of whom is sitting at the dais that has a great deal more knowledge about these things than I do. But I'm not here to get into technical aspects of energy codes tonight, my purpose is to give you some background. I want to explain to you where we are in energy code implementation, why we are where we are today, and the direction that we have planned in the coming months. I want to start with a little bit of a brief history, I want you to have some context for considering these codes. Prior to the year 2001, the City of Victoria was not enforcing an energy code. We were not inspecting buildings for energy compliance. For the most part, our builders were voluntary, voluntarily applying certain energy efficiency improvements, but it was not required. In 2001, the Texas Legislature passed Senate Bill 5, which mandated that the City of Victoria adopt and enforce the energy provisions of the 2000 Residential Code and the International Energy Conservation Code for commercial provisions. This mandate only applied to air quality non-attainment areas in Ta, as far as Texas is concerned, non-attainment for air quality in approximately 22 other affected counties in Texas. Now, an affected county, for the most part, affected counties include near non-attainment areas, for most of them, and then a few other special areas that are considered by the state for air quality monitoring purposes and planning purposes. And of course, Victoria is a near non-attainment area for air quality, as Mr. Dent alluded to earlier. And at this time in 2001 is when the city began an energy permitting and inspections program. In 2002, we were required by state law to adopt the 2000 Energy Codes, and we were not allowed to make any local amendments to those codes that would be less stringent than the published version of the code. Other Texas cities, those outside of non-attainment areas and the affected counties as defined in state law, were allowed to, to make amendments to the code prior to adopting, or as they adopted it. Again, in 2010, we adopted the 2009 International Codes, including the Energy Codes. Some of the provisions in that new Energy Code were more stringent than the previous one, but those, those really didn't prove to be, to make a significant difference, it was not a significant issue for, for our contractors. Then in 2015, the Legislature passed House Bill 1736, which established a deadline of September 1, 2016, to adopt the energy efficiency provisions of the 2015 Residential Code for single-family construction, and a deadline of November 1 of 2016 to adopt the Energy Codes for commercial and industrial construction, the 2015 Energy Codes. For non-attainment areas and affected counties, amendments to these codes could only be made if, they cannot be made unless they're approved by the State Energy Conservation Office after being recommended by the Texas A&amp;M Energy Systems Lab, which is the state-approved testing agency. The 2015 International Codes, including both type, both of the Energy Codes were adopted by the city in late 2015 with an effective date of January 1 of 2016. Prior to that adoption, the Builders Association of Victoria submitted suggested amendments to the residential portion of the Energy Code to our Board of Adjustments and Appeals. These amendments were approved by the board and then submitted to the Energy Systems Lab at Texas A&amp;M for their review and recommendation. The initial word that we received back from the lab was that there were not any significant issues. So we decided to move forward and adopt the 2015 Codes with the local amendments and await their final determination by the Energy Systems Lab. And I'll have a little more on this a little bit later in this report. With the background, or with that background out of the way, I first want to give you an update on the status of the Residential Energy Code and its implementation. These Energy Codes, the implementation of these Energy Codes has presented some significant challenges. As with any new code, any new code adoption, there's a learning curve. And on all new code adoptions, we acknowledge that learning curve, and we work with our customers on that basis. We understand that some inspections are going to fail, and we take those opportunities to discuss how to improve and how to meet the code the next time around. We generally will allow for one failure and then require the next, the next one to meet code. During this learning curve, this timeframe for the residential codes, there were some training seminars that were also held by the Builders Association at the same time. With January 1 of last year, 2016, being the effective date of the 2015 Codes, we allowed jobs that were permitted prior to that date to, to be constructed, to be completed under the previous code. That's our standard, standard process. For jobs that were permitted after the effective date, we worked with the contractors to achieve compliance. There were a number of questions early on as to how to comply with these provisions of the code, and the industry, both on the public sector side and the private sector side, were not geared up for the change. During this ramp-up stage, while we worked toward reaching compliance with the code, we did not hold up a job, shut down a job, deny a final inspection, or deny a certificate to occupy the structure based on energy code compliance alone. We set this ramp-up stage to expire at the state-mandated deadline of September 1, 2016. After the deadline, new jobs would be required to meet code and pass all required tests prior to the issuance of final inspections and certificates of occupancy. I want to give you an idea what some of the most significant changes are with the 25, 2015 Residential Codes. There are two that I, we think are most significant, or way more than that, but two that are most common. And those involve a duct system testing requirements and a whole-house tightness test, which is also known as a blower door test. The blower door test is conducted after the sheet rockets installed and the envelope of the building is complete. And failures in that whole-house tightness test may be from air leaks within the framing, which would be correcting, that would be difficult once the home is complete. And also, in the early stages of implementation, it was very difficult, it was very much of a challenge to find companies that could perform the required tests. Initially, there was no local testing agency, and we were not familiar with the testing agencies in other cities. Once we became aware of one company outside of the Victoria that did testing, we began to share that contact information with our contractors, and today, there are, currently, there still are no local testing companies, but we have a list of about eight companies in the surrounding areas that can perform the tests. Looking at this by the numbers, we issued 61 new home permits in 2016. Out of those 61, 20 of them passed the blower door tests. 19 either failed the blower door tests, or the tests were not done due to confusion on part of the contractors as to when the tests were supposed to be done, and 22 are still pending those blower door tests. 10 of the 61 new residential permits in 2016 were issued after the mandatory September 1 deadline. Of those 10, two have passed the blower door tests, and none have failed, eight are pending final inspections and tests. I mentioned early that I would come back to those amendments. A few weeks ago, on March 30, we received notice from the Energy Systems Lab at A&amp;M that all of our amendments had been denied. We began discussions, discussions with the lab immediately. A representative of the lab was actually in Victoria today, meeting with Rick and Mr. Dent, our Building Association representative. And we did get some good news this, this afternoon, and that is that the lab is working on a solution that would allow us to obtain approval of our local amendments with some trade-offs. We will need to change our ordinance that adopted these codes with those amendments to reflect these changes, and the timing of that will really depend on when the lab gets back to us with that compromise language and whether we're happy with what those trade-offs are going to be, but we expect it to be late summer. My final update on the residential side, about two weeks ago, April 5, we sent notice to the residential contractors that effective immediately, or a certificate of occupancy will not be issued unless all final inspections and blower door tests are code compliant. That is where we are on the residential side. So we, those codes are in, are in play currently today. We have not, we're not going to be issuing certificates of occupancy for those that do not pass those required tests. The contractors, if they're not able to meet the compliance, they will have to hire their own consultants to come in, energy consultants to come in and figure out what needs to be done to make it work. So that's where we are today on residential.
Don?
Yes, sir.
You said there are no testing companies in Victoria at the present time?
Yes, that's correct, for these tests.
So the closest testing company is where? Anybody know?
Where are they coming from?
Typically Corpus Christi.
Corpus Christi?
Corpus, yes, sir.
Um, if you're going to seal up a house tight enough, how do you make up air for anything that's combustible, like a furnace?
So you're going, you're going way beyond my level.
That's accounted for in the code on how to.
Expertise.
Mr. Halapaska, that's accounted for in the code on how you have to do that, and what that ventilation rate needs to be.
We could be here for many hours if you want to get into the technical side of these codes.
Do that, John?
I promise you, you don't want to hear it.
You don't want to do that? Spend many?
No, sir.
Sorry.
Sorry. That's not what I do. I want to move on to commercial, the commercial side of this issue, where, as I mentioned, the effective date, or the mandatory effective date was November of last, November 1 of last year. We are way behind the curve on implementation and enforcement of the new commercial requirements. We're following a similar strategy as we have for residential, which is training, a ramp-up period for enforcement, and setting a final compliance date for later this year. We're further behind on commercial implementation, simply because the code changes are far more complex and comprehensive in nature. We also have that added challenge of being in that group of non-attainment and affected counties that cannot adopt local amendments without state approval. Rick, the other day, last, last week, gave me a list of what he considers to be the more significant changes in the 2015 Commercial Energy Code. It's about a half a page long, and I'm not going to read it to you. You'll, you'll thank me. But I can tell you that there's a great deal more information and technical detail that will be required, or that is required, to be included in the construction plans that we review in order to document compliance with the new code. Where we are today, we're currently requiring compliance with the 2015 Energy Code on larger projects where engineering is required, where they're having to provide engineered plans for other reasons already. Of course, our permitting numbers are down, so there have been very few of those projects so far that have been affected by that. Other smaller projects have continued as is, pending additional training. The lack of training has been a major challenge for both the public sector, meaning our, the people, city employees who have to review these plans and then inspect the improvements, but also for the private sector contractors that do the work, that are going, going to do the construction and installations. Opportunities for training are limited, and they are in very high demand statewide. And the organizations that provide the needed training have had lengthy backlogs. We are finally starting to make some headway in this area. We recently were able to secure some free training for staff and contractors by the South Central Partnership for Energy Efficiency. South Central Partnership for Energy Efficiency as a resource. Those, the first sessions were offered in Victoria last week, and we have another training session scheduled for April 25th. Now, these particular sessions are providing an overview of the new codes, and we're also working to schedule additional, more in-depth training opportunities. At the same time, we're notifying contractors of webinars that are available for energy code training. And as we're working through the, the training challenges that we're dealing with today, Rick will also be working with the Board of Adjustments and Appeals on the ramp-up schedule and an ultimate compliance deadline. So that's where we are today. If you have questions, I will do my best to answer them, or get Rick up here to, to answer them if, if I need to.
Don, one of the reasons for the tutorial thing on the energy code is that, you know, once these businesses start failing, those tests, you're gonna get phone calls-
Yes.
You know, about issuing permits, so that's kind of one of the reasons we needed to make you aware of what was going on with it.
It's really on two levels. It's the enforcement side of the compliance, mandatory compliance side on the residential, issue on the residential side. It's the, the plan review and the level of information that's required just to get a permit on the commercial side as we move forward, that, you know, we're gonna have challenges. We are mandated to adopt and enforce these codes, and we're doing our best to, to get up to speed and to, to be able to meet that requirement.
Okay. When somebody comes in and we start getting our phone calls, we're gonna give them your number, but one of the questions I want to ask is, is there somebody in the city that's going to be knowledgeable enough to be able to handle all these calls?
Absolutely, yeah. The Rick, Rick Madrid staff and all, they're, they know, it's just, you'll get the phone calls to try to put political pressure on, you know, issuing the permits, so.
Now, these efficiency codes, are they going to be for the city only, not the county?
That's correct. We can only enforce our codes within the city limits.
Okay, now, what about if you're in the ETJ? How, how strict is that going to be?
We cannot enforce building codes in the ETJ, only within the city limits.
Within the city, okay.
We have no authority to do that outside the city boundaries, the city limit.
Okay.
I do want to point out that what makes this so challenging for them, and this is my opinion, is the general contractors aren't licensed. There's no continuing education, there's no review of codes out there. Anybody can go down and be a general contractor. Other trades, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, are all licensed. They're required to have CEUs every year. Codes covered in all that, especially when there's major changes like this 2015 code, but with, it's fantastic that they're offering this code training, these two dates. It gives the general contractors an opportunity to go in to free training. You don't need to be there for four hours, give you a brief overview, and it's probably gonna scare them enough to go take something else, because there's a lot in there. But I appreciate y'all getting through all of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rick. I know it's not easy. And it, it, what's required in this code and the city, what they have to review now has totally changed. It's, it's gonna be burdensome on them.
There's some great challenges. Not only that, they've changed, there are competing codes now, and there are things in the energy code that are going to make it extremely difficult to meet things in the mechanical code, for example. And that's going to put the building official in a very difficult position of having to make an interpretation and say, this one rises above the other. And so it's, those things, you know, Rick is, is doing a very good job, he's very knowledgeable. He needs more training in this area, as do his inspectors and plan reviewers. So at the same time that we're encouraging the contractors to get out there and, and learn about this, we're getting educated, because it doesn't do much good to require somebody to turn in a full set of plans that meet the 2015 energy code if we can't determine whether it does. So we have, we all have work to do.
I also want to thank Mr. McCoy and his leadership on that Board of Building Adjustments and Appeals.
Yes, sir.
He's doing a good job shepherding this through and working with Rick and everybody, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good, good presentation, John, and a good way to explain it, and I echo Councilman Bocknight's sentiments, especially Rick. I've known, I used to sit in the very back before I was elected to council with you. Remember, I joked about being in the heckler section? You've, you've got a very difficult job, you know, having to go up to a contractor and say, can't do that. I don't know how, I don't know how you do it day after day, it's tough, so it's a special talent, we appreciate that, everybody in your department. This is one of those topics, and I, I remember seeing some of these codes debated 20 years ago, and I can't imagine you're the typical citizen. It's like, there's a code to prevent a citizen from doing anything, if you look hard enough, literally. And, and Mr. Bocknight, you know, I mean, and it frustrates me, because, well, just go out in the county and build, then we'll, we'll inherit that. Some council, 20, 30, 40 years from now, inherit all that, and then it'd be expected to, at some point, remedy it or try to enforce something on a citizen. And this, this is a statement I want to make, and I don't, not necessarily question, I assume every bit of this is tied to federal funds. Why would the state legislature impose this on us? Probably tied to federal funds they receive. It all starts up at the federal government, and it's so burdensome. It frustrates me to no end. I feel like I have no control. You can stop and imagine, if none of this was here, what would our electrical code look like that our staff would come up compared to what they're having to deal with? So, you know, I hope the public understands that, that we're stuck trying to enforce something that is extremely complex, complex and frustrating. So I appreciate y'all. I hope it gets better. I don't see how it can get any more complex, and I don't even know the details of it, just very little.
We think when the 2018 codes come out, there, there's some talk about some of the issues that have been identified in the 2015 energy code being resolved, some of the conflicts, but we gotta wait. They won't let us amend it on our own, so we have to wait.
Okay. Well, good report.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Does that conclude our business? Okay, thank you, council, we are adjourned.